But we'll, we'll work through it too. You know, it's pretty, it's pretty casual and I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure that we're live right now on Facebook. So if you guys are, are in with us, please give us some, some thumbs up and some hearts and likes. Let us know that you're, that you're here. Uh, today I'm here with a commute, our city council member, uh, city councilman Scott Alvord, which feels weird to place that title on you Scott, cause you have like 60 amazing titles. City Councilman, Community Ambassador is the one that I've been calling you lately, cause you're just like, I mean, doing a million things for this community always. I see you everywhere. And the fact that I have a bit of your time today is huge. So thank you, thank you. I know you're incredibly busy serving people, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Noon.
Good afternoon. So, so I've been trying to kick off these tribe calls Scott. These are, as you know, these are called, I've, I told you, these are calls that I'm doing with people that are leaders in the community or professionals or people that have information that can value, that can be of value to people in our database. And I've been trying to kick off these calls with some sort of good fun thing. You know, one day I talked about the good, there's a company called Good Good Co. And all they do is report good news. And so that's what's inspired me to do this. And so I just want to know like, what, what good news do you have for me today?
Oh man, um, I got two pieces. So one thing was kind of fun last week is I, I got notice early in the morning that the, the Roseville Police Motorcycle Patrol Officers were going to do kind of a flash mob parade in the West Park area near Orchard Ranch Elementary School, which isn't far from my house. So that's why they called and said, hey, by the way, we're going to do this. And so I, I posted it on, on the West Park Neighborhood Association, part of our Kona, the Roseville Coalition and Neighborhood Associations and, and then a couple of West Park Neighborhood Group things out on Facebook and on Nextdoor for West Park. And, and so it was really fun. I took my dogs out for a walk and we walked a couple of blocks and there were people all over the place. They were all keeping their distance from each other.
Yeah.
You look down the streets and see family members all over the place, you know, in different corners. And, and so the motorcycle cops came out, Station Nine brought an engine out. And so they had lights and occasionally sirens and stuff going. The motorcycles were, were going in circles and going around in front of the kids and the kids just had a blast. There's a whole bunch of really young families out here.
Sure.
There was even some older folks sitting out in their lawn chairs and stuff. So it was really a, a pretty cool little last minute put together thing that we got notified about and, and I think it was just a nice way for the, the police department, the fire department to reach out to the community and say, hey, you know, we know you got all these kids at home. We're trying to, you know, lighten things up, give you something a little different. And you know, the kids were having a blast. A lot of made signs. So there's all these kids out holding signs. That was real fun.
Guys, that's awesome. Yeah. I, you know, I've noticed that the teachers are starting to do something similar to that as well, which.
Teacher parades, yeah.
Yeah. So, so cool. There's a lot of, there is still, you know, we're, we're in challenging times for sure. Definitely not making, uh, making light of that, but there's still a lot of good and there's a lot of opportunity to serve. And I think that's what we'll be talking about today as well. Like just the, there's a tremendous opportunity right now to serve. And that's what you've always done, but, but you know, it's in a whole new level and so. Okay. Because you have, wear so many hats, I have a variety of questions. And by the way, anybody that's, anybody that's watching, the whole point of this is to drop in your questions. You know, any questions that you have for, for Scott?
Your wife is on here now too. Oh great, honey, don't ask.
I really, really.
He now calls it. I know that's what she wants to say.
Wait, what does she, what does she want to say?
She, I don't know, but I know she's gonna wanna, she would probably say something like, when are you gonna finish cleaning the closet? Cause um, got a few things happening outside of the house right now that are keeping me a little busy. And so we have a closet that's been emptied and we just now gotta put it all back. So.
Okay. I thought maybe you're like filling it full of, of stuff, which is kind of a spoiler. We'll get, we'll get to that.
That's my office. Yeah.
Okay. Yes. So, so far no questions from Karen. So thanks, thanks Karen. But yeah, if you, you know, as you guys are watching, dropping questions, um, you know, a lot of people, hundreds of people will watch this video after the fact, uh, after we're live. And so if you guys have questions, drop them here. I'm sure, I know actually, cause I've witnessed it. Um, Scott, I'm, I'm assuming Scott, you'll be happy to answer, maybe type in some short answers to questions later on. So. And you'll be tagged here and we're gonna drop all social media links and all of that stuff as well. So, um, so yeah, so I have a variety of questions for you, but the first one, let's focus on the city. What I, what I'd like to know, just kind of generally, and we can dive in, we can dive deeply into any specific topic that you, uh, that you, that you think is fit. But generally speaking, what is the city doing right now to adapt? And to serve the, the community in, in regards to what's happening?
Well, as everybody knows, the last couple of weeks have been just crazy. And our city staff are, just like the rest of us, they're all adjusting. This is unique. We've never, ever had this situation before. Almost, most of the city staff are home, working from home. They've, they've even taken the council, our, our computers that we normally use for council meetings, they've distributed them out to, to staff. So that they can all get in there. They're having Zoom video conference calls and conference phone calls constantly. Which is interesting, I think. A quick side note, I think down the road, we're gonna realize, you know, everybody's business model will now include video conferencing as an option, cause we all are kind of been forced to do that, many of us.
Yeah.
So, you know, there's been some announcements that have come out, the, the, again, the city has been working. We, we gave our city manager the power to make decisions on the spot. Without having to go through the long process of a, you know, a couple of weeks of working through council to get approval for everything. So he's has emergency powers to do anything in relation to this virus situation. So that means buying, um, new equipment for the firefighters. They've got to get new, uh, you know, stuff they wear. I don't know the name of all of it, but, um, you know, getting masks for them. Paying extra overtime or not, they, they've had to, we, we've released hundreds of employees in our Parks and Rec Department. Like five to 700 people. There's a lot of people that have been laid off now, just because we're not able to run the programs. And so after this all passes, we're trying to hire some back, but we've got, you know, there's, there's a lot of drastic changes happening right now in the city and everybody's working on policies and, and how to handle all this process. As well as, you know, Laura Matti always Economic Development Team, she has housing and economic development. They've been working like crazy because they had to come out. They came up with, they came up with a loan program, which we can talk about. And also additional dollars to infuse into the rapid rehousing program that we have to try to keep people from going into homelessness through this process. And so, you know, they've been working around, around the clock to try to, you know, get the funding, figure out how to do it. Run it through the legal team to make sure we're doing everything legally. And, um, and the council gave them a nod at the last meeting, you know, that we want to see this go forward. And, and they did. It was amazing. And so they, um, anyway, I don't, I don't want to go too much detail there, but as you can tell, there's just, everything is different, everything is changing. Probably the biggest thing right now is we are trying to prepare for the lack of revenue coming in. As you heard, the, the mall has closed down for a while. And that, that's a big source of sales tax dollars to the city. And we use those dollars and property tax dollars to pay for police and fire and, you know, a lot of the services that the city provides. And so that's a, a big change. So we're trying to really be careful with that budget, cause we know the money's, you know, like sales tax, you're not making that up. Be kind of gone until people start shopping again. And when you buy groceries, you don't usually pay tax on some of those groceries. And so, um, anyway, just a lot of adjustments right now. Everybody's scrambling, trying to figure out how this is gonna turn out and how long it will last.
Yeah, that's a really good point. I mean, it feels like we're, we're pretty newly celebrating the, the quarter percent, you know, bump that, that we got and the city gets all right. And so, and now obviously that's, uh, that's put on hold. So it makes, makes sense. Shoot, when you were, I, I brought up my pad here, cause I'm gonna start writing down some questions, but we were talking about, oh, um, we were talking about, uh, oh yeah, that's right. I have two, two points. Mental note. One, it seems to me that the city is, one of the main adjustments, if I, if I hear you right, is that they're just making decisions quicker, right? Like we don't have a whole lot of time. Um, so they're, they're empowering city officials to do things faster, basically. Has there ever been, I know we're in unprecedented times in terms of this particular, you know, with the shutdown. Has there ever been an instance where that's kind of been put into effect before, like empowering city officials to do things faster? Because of a, I don't know, I don't know. Is that?
Like when, um, you know, when the Twin Towers came down.
Yeah.
The community around there, those city officials were, you know, the same kind of thing happened there.
Okay.
I'm not aware of it in Roseville. Maybe there may have been, uh, maybe during the mall fire, I wasn't on council then, but I, you know, that might've been a time where they, I think that is, they gave the city manager power to make quick decisions to deal with some things without. Cause the, the process of going through council is, is quite a process. Everything has to go through several layers of approval. Gets on the agenda, we get educated on it. And, and then we have, you know, we have to announce it to the public. At least a week ahead of time and when we're meeting. And so the public can be involved in everything we do and give feedback. And then of course you have the council meeting itself. In fact, I can kind of show you the difference. So.
I'm so glad you pulled that out, I, cause I could see it in the corner there and I was like.
Couple of council meetings ago, this, this was the packet that I received. And so, uh, city council, the Thursday before a council meeting, we receive a packet. There's a volunteer police, a police volunteer that drives to all of our houses and delivers a, a packet in a big envelope. And the, the Thursday before, every single Thursday, but the Thursday before council meetings, it's, it's extra thick. And, and so this is what mine looked like. These tabs are my notes and stuff, cause I usually try to actually read through as much of it as I can. Luckily, a lot of this are, sometimes there's like, um, big contracts and, and I read them page to page when I was first elected, but now I kind of understand what to look for. So I just went through and check a few things. I don't have to read every single page now, but so I've got from Thursday till Tuesday to read this, cause then I meet with the city manager to get my questions answered. So that's what I took in for my questions. But this is the packet, like for the meeting tonight, we have a meeting tonight. And so it's much thinner. Uh, they've taken out, sorry, my dogs are, my front is a, a way station right now with, um, people coming and going, uh, we can talk about that later.
Yeah.
Doing porch drop offs and pickups. So, uh, but anyway, so this is the, the packet for tonight, much thinner.
Yeah.
And, um, and these are only the essential things that are going on. They, they've taken out stuff that's just not essential. They're not even worrying about it and, and we'll catch up with it later. But these are some land things. There's development still happening. So we have to get some of these things through. And, um, anyway, so you can watch council meeting tonight if you'd like. And most of them are consent items. So there's not even a whole lot of discussion now. So that, that's a big change for us. That's huge.
Yeah, I got it. Like, do you approve this or not? Right?
Yeah.
What, what, and we don't have to dive too deep into this, because there's some serious other topics that are really important, I think timely for right now. But just, just to feed my curiosity, what types of land development is hap, are happening right now?
Well, there's, you know, as you know, um, Western Roseville, there's a lot of development. It's not always just Western Roseville, but that's where most of it is taking place. So there are roads that are getting built right now. There are, um, land contracts, you know, uh, Amoruso Ranch, we just approved some stuff with Amoruso Ranch. And so they're getting ready and they're, they have, they have financial stuff with their banks and, and different investors. I don't know all the details, but they have to get certain decisions passed at a certain time in order to get the funding. And all this stuff happens long before they start building houses. Yeah, it's still a couple of years away, but they've got to get electrical lines up there and, you know, utilities. And, um, we had to approve the decisions they're making on, you know, what kind of the electrical lines going up there, for example. And then that's go through planning commission and then through council, of course, through staff first. And so things like that, there's, there's timelines in place that you've just got to get that stuff done, because, um, it makes a big effect down the road. Also the housing industry, as the governor said, that's still a priority. Building homes is still a priority. So people have homes to live in, because we have a huge shortage as it is. And Roseville, as, as we all know, and you're a Realtor, um, you know, this is a prime place for people to move to. Many of my neighbors, uh, probably two thirds of my neighbors are, are new Roseville residents. They've moved from other places. It's just a, it's a great place to bring your family, young families, and it's a great place to retire as well. And so you get the, the younger group and the older group, um, real popular spot. And so, and continuing to build those homes is important to the state and to our own local economy. That's, it's essential for our economy, because our, our finances are designed around growth. And, and if we stop growing, we're gonna, our expenses, our, our revenue is not gonna keep up with our expenses. We're gonna be in trouble again. So that's where the measure B really helped with that quarter cent thing. That, that was, you know, kind of helped catching us up. Right? So those kinds of things are essential.
Yeah.
And then there's other things, you know, um, trying to remember what some of the other consent items were on there. Uh, we, we have to, there's a transportation issue that's getting pulled off the consent calendar. We'll talk about it tonight. Something that didn't go on there is we were gonna have a presentation last week on vaping. You know, vaping is a huge issue in the state and, and it's an important thing. And the city council was gonna hear an issue on it and discuss whether we wanted to set up some vaping ordinances in the city. Well, this is something the community would like to have a say in. You know, it, it could affect some businesses, but it definitely affects our children and our families. You know, young kids are getting hooked on this all the time. And so we wanted to allow the public to participate and to be able to give their opinion on what we should do and how far, you know, we should maybe do something.
Right.
Tried to push that off, because right now it's, we don't want the public coming out. You know, it's not safe. And, and so, you know, we made changes that way.
Yeah, I didn't even think about that. So you can, yeah, the public can attend meetings and add input on certain topics and, and, or just bring in new topics that they're concerned about, right? And so that's obviously not, not an option right now.
And tonight, I, I think they're not even allowing the public in there tonight. But there, there's a way, um, I haven't actually read it, but there's a way the public can email in or message in during the meeting.
Oh wow.
Just speak that way, but it's, it's, uh, the governor's changed some of the Brown Act regulations. Because everything we do normally, we, we have to do it in a public setting. We can't even meet, like the five council members. I can talk with any one council member about a topic, uh, but I can't talk to two, because that would be three of us conversing and that would be outside of a public meeting that's against the law. And so we have to have all those kinds of meetings in a public setting where the public is announced ahead of time, what, you know, what the topic is. They get an agenda ahead of time. And then they can participate and communicate in that conversation with their opinions, because we're their representatives. So we don't make secret deals behind the scenes and, unlike a lot of people think.
Sure.
So it's changing a little bit, because you can't have those kinds of meetings now. You can't always have the public right there where they can interact, um, as easily. And, but the governors changed those laws just for a time being. And so we're only doing really essential stuff and trying to put off some of the, the things that can wait as best we can, because we don't want to exclude the public from that.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that makes sense. And I wonder if, uh, well, hopefully this doesn't happen too much longer, but I wonder if it, you know, if it does continue for some length of time, what, you know, what technology might bring to that area as well, right?
Yeah.
So I do have questions about, um, about, I have more questions, not so much about city council stuff, but there, some people here have asked questions. So, um, uh, in the city of Lincoln, it sounds like they're discouraging against parades. Kind of like the one that the, like the police, uh, the police motor, motorcade. And like the, I guess the teachers and things like that, because it brings people, uh, too many people outside their house at the same time. You know, I, I guess it was just kind of a comment, like what are your thoughts on that?
Well, you know, the, the public distancing is what's important. So your own household, you know, hopefully you're not distancing within your own household. Unless somebody's actually sick in there with a virus or something, but generally if somebody's got it in your house, the rest of you have it and you just don't know it yet. But when you go outside your household, you, you don't want to be mingling with other households, even other family members that don't live under your roof, because that's, again, you're, you can be contagious with this virus before you know you've got it. And so that's the danger. So if you do have a parade and people are smashed along the sides of the roads next to each other, that's the danger. What the police did is they went all through the neighborhood. And so people were out in front of their houses or up on their porch or down on the corner. And from my observations, everybody was staying away from each other. Even when I walked down, you could kind of see people moving. I walked down the street with my dogs, you know, go around people and I didn't see any groups that didn't look like they were part of the same family together. Everybody was automatically doing what they're supposed to. But I know that's not the case everywhere. We're still finding, um, I have a lot of neighbors that I, I get messages on Nextdoor. I'm looking over here, cause my monitor's up here. Uh, Nextdoor on Facebook and, um, I threw messages and email people talking about, you know, there's, there's all kinds of groups of kids playing on the playground, you know, when are you guys gonna get the police out there and, I don't know, arrest them or something? You know, and that's an issue. You don't want to be, don't let your kids go on the playground equipment. Think that's not smart. I mean, and we can't have somebody out there sanitizing right behind every child as they grab something. And the virus can sit on, if somebody's infected and they, they cough or they sneeze on the equipment. You know, it can be on that equipment for, you know, up to a day, depending what kind of material it is and what the weather's like and stuff. But even in a few minutes, some other kid comes along and grabs it and kids are always picking their nose and wiping their face. And, you know, that's how this thing's gonna spread. And we've just got to stop that part for a while. You know, grab a frisbee and go play catch with your family. Uh, your household, you know, just don't intermingle with the others right now. It's, it's, it's weird, but we just got to do it. And then we'll, we'll flatten the curve and we won't have this big spike that we're really worried about.
Yeah. Other than that, I imagine there might be some background for the city of Lincoln. Like maybe they had a, a bad experience or they kind of learned their lesson, but it seems like, you know, if everybody's kind of doing their part, then Roseville will probably still continue to provide, you know, some sort of, uh, fun things and stuff like that, just to.
If it was the Fourth of July parade, we'd definitely cancel that if that was right now. Because you, you know, there's just, there's a couple of thousand people there and they're, they're not gonna be able to stay away from each other. So. Those kinds of parades, yes. Just some impromptu going through the neighborhood kind of things, or even the teacher parades. You know, I, I think the, you know, and just keep reminding people, keep your social distance.
Yeah.
I see it happening more than I don't. I mean, it's pretty rare to see groups together from, from my observation.
Yeah. Yep. Same with here. And there's even like the courteous, you know, eight foot separation when you're passing by, you know, when we walked up and, and an older man was with his walker was crossing the street. And we know, we paused to let him sit there at the corner and do his thing. And then we went forward, you know, just, you gotta be super cautious.
I know down the road.
Done. What's that?
Let's say, can you imagine when this is over a year from now, somebody is going in the grocery store and they sneeze next to you. And you're, everybody's totally, it's kind of changing, uh, the future here. This is, um, you know, handshake. I wonder when it's gonna, if it's gonna be uncool now.
Yeah. Uh, side note, you know, and that's the same, so I was listening to a thing about reticular act, act, reticular activating system. R, RES, right? And things you, uh, the things you think about, you begin to see everywhere. And so sneezing and coughing is what we're thinking about and seeing everywhere. I'm just like, man, you know, you know, we're really not thinking too much about is, is smiling. And I haven't noticed anywhere else smiles. So everywhere I go, like, I don't go many places, but when I go to the store now, I'm like smiling. I probably look like a madman, but I'm doing it just to try to break this system. So.
That's good. You have a good smile. That's good.
Thanks. Um, okay. Couple more questions, then I have some, uh, I, you have some really important topics that I want to make sure we get to. How, uh, question, how equipped? Oh, how equipped are the Roseville hospitals to currently to handle COVID-19? Do we know? Do you know?
Yes, the stats have come out on the county website. Um, I don't know off the top of my head, but if you go to the Roseville website, the city website, it's roseville.ca.us. Everything's right on the front page. So there's a COVID-19 link on there and it is, I really advise you to look at that every few days, because that's all factual. There, there, you don't have to, it's not hype. They have, uh, state and county links, I believe on there to, to the facts. So whatever you see on there, um, it's, it's really good material. I've gone through there several times and it, it's, you know, it's a good Q and A section on there explaining the facts for you.
Okay.
Our Roseville hospitals, the nice thing about Roseville is we have a lot of hospitals. There's a lot of medical care here. That's why it's a great place to retire, actually. Um, and we, we have a lot of beds. There is a certain percentage. I don't, I wish I could remember. I, I get notices, the city manager sends us notices. I don't have one in front of me right now. You know, the percentage is going up for the number of beds that have COVID-19 patients. The, the hospitals are, um, they're just gearing for it. They've been in talks with the hotels, because our hotels are pretty dead right now. So we have the ability to handle a surge. We have a lot of large buildings at the fairgrounds that, um, are on standby. I, I don't know the details. This is more the county function, because they're the Health and Human Services Division. We don't have it in the city, so we just go by what they, uh, tell us.
Okay.
So my understanding is they're really on top of this and they're really trying to be prepared if we get a spike. And, and the cases have gone up. We were up to, I shouldn't quote numbers right now, but, um, I, we started with nine that we knew about, quickly got up into the twenties and, and it's higher now. So.
Yeah.
But it, you know, we're gonna, we expect a lot to go even higher this week. So this is gonna be, um, you know, we're starting to climb. We just gotta keep away from each other for a couple of weeks, let it run through its course and, and we can get out of this quicker, I hope.
Yeah. I hope so. And that was actually one of the next questions is, uh, can you ask about like, or can you ask, some proactive program in the city that Roseville would, you know, maybe lease out an empty building or that could be converted into, um, uh, you know, pre-medical recovery clinic with beds in order to prepare for, you know, foster county residents. But it sounds like that's kind of what hap, like there's buildings at the, at the fairgrounds. There's, they're in talks with hospitals. Does the city get involved at all, or is that pretty private?
It's mostly the county is handling all that. I, I think the cities, uh, we're not directly doing that. Cause again, we don't, we don't handle, sorry, my dogs are.
It's okay.
Hearing, I think this is actually a delivery truck this time.
Truck.
Yeah. But the, anyway, so the county handles that stuff. I apologize for my puppies.
It's okay.
They've been getting a lot of excitement at the porch lately.
Yeah. Okay. So county handles that stuff. Let's actually jump straight into that. It's a perfect segue. What are the dogs freaking out about? Why is there a delivery truck at your house?
There is, um, so after the announcement, when everything got real serious and we had the order take place, I, I was sitting here at home and dealing with messages from the community, people were afraid and especially early on, you know, what does this mean exactly? This is a hoax. I mean, all kinds of stuff coming out. And, and I was just thinking about, um, you know, the older people in the community, all these people that are stuck at home now. And I, I just had this weird idea and I, so I created a Facebook group and it's called Roseville Volunteer Force. And if you search for it, I, I'm not sure how big our membership is, but we're probably over 1,300. It, it swelled up to like a thousand within a few days. It was pretty amazing, actually. And it, uh, people just joined the group. And it's funny, somebody goes on there and says, I'm out of toilet paper. Can anybody help me? Messages like crazy. Every, I've got it. I can bring it over to your house, you know?
Yeah.
And, and so I started keeping a spreadsheet of volunteers. And when people would message me, hey, you know, I've got this situation at home where I, I, I remember the first one was my father just got home from surgery. Seventy-eight year old father got home from surgery and we don't have any sanitary wipes and we're running low on toilet paper. And, you know, the hospital didn't send them with us. And so, and we're worried about this virus and he's very susceptible. And, and so I started organizing volunteers and needs and I created a spreadsheet. And it was off the group, cause you know, we don't have cell numbers and addresses and everything in the group for everybody to see. So I was getting these messages and I was starting to put them in a spreadsheet and I've got my spreadsheet up right now. I currently have 136 volunteers in the spreadsheet, all their cell numbers, addresses, uh, at least what area of town they live in. Whether or not they have Venmo for like, if they're doing shopping for somebody, so they get reimbursed without a cash exchange. We definitely don't want anybody to have somebody's credit card or anything like that.
Right.
And then I have needs, people that are requesting things. And somebody, a volunteer went and created an online form where people could fill out what their needs are and it goes into a, a spreadsheet. So nobody sees the details of their address and gate code or, you know, whatever. And, and so I'm just spending my time hooking up needs and volunteers. And hey, I've got somebody in the situation. Here's their cell number. Would you mind, you know, hoping they need shopping or they need to get some medications picked up? And I, I try to make note if one of the volunteers has had a background check, like maybe they're a teacher or something like that. And I, I try to make note if one of the volunteers has had a background check, like maybe they're a teacher or something like that. And, and just warn people, you know, don't want anybody to come in your house. They're all porch pickup, drop-offs, no cash exchange, you know, that kind of thing. To, just don't want to have issues with it. And it's just been a really fun, interesting experience, but it is overwhelming at times. I, I can give you a typical day just on this program. I, I, I wake up at probably six or seven in the morning, if I'm lucky. And I already have easily twenty to fifty messages, uh, or emails, but usually they're messages from Nextdoor or Facebook. And, or texts if they've got my cell number. Um, people wanting to volunteer are people that have needs. And so I, I have been, actually a lot of times it's questions. And so I spend, I lay in bed, I spend my time just replying to these messages. And it's usually if somebody wants to be a volunteer, I send, I have a little thing, like copy and paste into the message about, you know, I need to get your cell number, what area of town you live in, do you have Venmo, kind of explain it to them. And then, um, so I send that to them and I, and I, when they reply, I just don't read the reply on it. So I can kind of see enough of the message to know. So I leave it till I get to my computer where I can get them in a spreadsheet. So I just deal with all these different issues while I'm still laying in bed. Usually it takes two to three hours and no joke.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
And then once I kind of caught up enough there where I, I feel like, okay, I'm, I'm going to go to the bathroom and eat and take a shower. And then I come out and get on my computer and start fulfilling orders, you know, start connecting people and, and setting up packages. I do it at night before I go to bed. Get them all on my porch with everybody's name. If they're coming to do a porch pickup, my porch looks really crazy. My neighbors are really patient because I've got cars coming and going in this cul-de-sac all the time. Uh, either picking something up or dropping off something they're donating. And, and my office, um, is, it's not totally full, but I have a lot of toilet paper and paper towels and disinfectant wipes and hand sanitizer and um, some gloves and, and masks and dish soap. There, there's a lot of stuff here that it's hard to find in the store that people just donated.
Yeah.
And so my big worry is that all of a sudden the stores are going to have it all and I'm going to be stuck with all this stuff. I'll take it to the gathering in or something, but um, I guess that's what I've been doing last couple of weeks. Uh, almost every waking hour I've been involved in this. My, my wife, this weekend, we, we emptied a huge closet and I was stupid. I didn't wear a mask. And so all the dust, like, because the stuff has been in there a couple of years and, and my nose is still bothering me and I keep thinking, do I have the virus? Sinuses are, and I know it's from the.
No.
Yeah. And she had the issue too, but even this morning I was kind of stuffy when I woke up, but you know, I don't have any other symptoms and it's, it's getting better, but. Anyway, so it's just been a little crazy here, but it's, it's been a joy. I mean, I, I get to hear the stories behind the scenes that most people don't get to hear. Um, and it's interesting, a lot of city staff have been helping. I've got, a lot of these volunteers are from the police department or the fire department or city staff. I just posted, you know, Rob Jensen, our prior city manager did a shopping run for somebody. Our, our current city manager's family went and donated a bunch of stuff to somebody's house and they drove it over. I mean, it's kind of cool. Um, you know, they did it on the weekend, not when he was working because we don't give him much of a break anyway. But it's kind of neat watching all these people get involved and realtors and a lot of teachers and, you know, it's cool stories happening all around us and the community, I think, is just really coming together. And if you just go through the, the Roseville Volunteer Force Group, read some of the stories, I mean, it's amazing. And, and it kind of runs itself. People post stuff and everybody jumps on. A few people are helping me manage the page thing, turn off commenting once a, a need has been fulfilled.
Okay.
Yeah. It's, it's kind of cool, kind of cool what our community does.
What, um, do you, so mostly I asked the question just to learn more about it. I know you're passionate about sharing the story, but that was, this isn't, the purpose of this isn't to pitch, but do you need anything right now? Because people watching, I'm sure they, there's a tremendous opportunity to get involved in some areas and how can they get involved?
Well, I think that the biggest thing that most people are still having a hard time finding is hand sanitizer. And, and we had somebody do a, a thing where they actually went and bought hand sanitizer. They, they put a thing out, anybody wants to contribute to it and it, and they were nine dollars a bottle. It was a, a local regional distillery that started making hand sanitizer. They weren't cheap, but, um, but the community bought them. They pitched their money, bought a bunch and, and so we had the, um, I forget the name of it, the Roseville Public Safety Foundation donated a bunch. And then this community group brought over fifty of them. And so I'm down to about twenty, I think, roughly right now. So if people have, you know, it's kind of interesting because I, so I keep looking over here at my stash of stuff. It, it kind of grows and shrinks and grows. And again, I'm a little worried about having too much. Uh, we're okay right now, but if you've got extra stuff that you want to donate, uh, you know, connect with me. I'll give you an address. You can just come drop it off on the porch and I'll put it in the system, uh, first in, first out. So everything gets to sit there untouched for a few days, hopefully, before it goes back out and and my hands are getting dry because I have to, I, I sanitize them before I package anything up or before I, or after I pull something off the porch, you know, it's like my, my fingers aren't used to this.
Um, so, yeah, someone said in a, in a neighborhood group the other day, um, you know, hey, I have masks. And I didn't know exactly how many masks she had, but I know that, I, so I guess is there too small, like, you know, hey, I have six masks. Like, is that something that?
Those are needed. Yeah. A lot of people ask for masks and I don't have a lot. So I've been real careful who I give them to. So, um, it's typically some of the elderly that, that feel like they have to go shopping, which I wish they wouldn't. We've got people who aren't happy to help them.
Yeah.
Um, but I've given masks to them. I've had a few clinics that have talked about, they've been wearing a mask for a week, the same mask, and that's horrible. And so we've donated several to them. I'm down to a few. So that, that's, uh, that's probably the biggest hole I have right now.
Okay.
Going out every day. So we'll be running out of sand, sand, hand sanitizer again pretty soon.
Yeah. I've seen some people are making through, not, and not locally, but I saw on the internet, three D masks, right? With the three D printer. They're creating their own.
That group is, um, I don't have the website up. It's, it's like shields up or shields down or something like that. And it's run, it's, it's being run out of the, um, uh, the Rockland, oh, what's it called? The tech center there.
Oh, no way. Oh, it is local.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Uh, Hacker Lab.
Oh, yeah. Hacker Lab, okay.
Guy there that has a bunch of three D printers and he set all this up and he's put them, he's put the design out on the internet and people have picked it up all around the region and are running their three D printers, making these. We're doing fundraising right now. They're trying to raise twenty or thirty thousand dollars. And I apologize, I wish I had that handy. I wonder if I could find it real quick because it's a neat thing if somebody wants to contribute to it. To try to get it out to the doctors, but people are making these for free, which is really cool.
Yeah. And Laura's on the call too. Laura on my team, if you could, if you could find that link from Hacker Lab, the Rockland, probably search like Rockland three D masks. And we could drop that link in here.
It's, it's like shields up or shields down or, yeah.
Cool.
I've restarted my computer and I don't have the browser tab up anymore. Sorry.
Yeah, no, that's all right. I think she, she, uh, I think she found it. So we'll drop it in the, uh, in the comments for everybody. That's awesome. Yeah. I didn't know they were local. That's, that's so cool. Um, okay. So we've been going for about forty minutes now. You've been sharing a lot. Thank you so much. Uh, there's one more thing though, that I want to ask you about because I saw you post, actually no, there's two things. Um, the, the other thing is you have a community event coming up, like tomorrow, no, Friday.
Right, Friday, huh?
Friday at one thirty.
Yeah. We, we do these coffee with councils, some of the council members. Uh, I've been trying to do them every month and a half roughly, just pick different places around the city and I hold a public meeting and let people ask questions. And, and just try to go through them. Uh, and so we're doing the very first virtual, uh, coffee with council. And so it's going to be Friday at one thirty and, uh, you've got to register for it. We have an Eventbrite link that you got to go in and register. We can only take fifty people. We're going to do a Zoom video conference call. I'm going to try to organize it a little bit. People can email me ahead of time. In fact, you got to, the deadlines tonight, I believe at eleven PM. So I've got all day tomorrow to work with city staff and try to organize all the questions and in case there's some answers I need to, to get. Um, and just so it's not total chaos during the event, but hopefully towards the end, we can open it up for questions as well. Um, you can find the Eventbrite link. If you're on Facebook, it's been shared on Facebook and Nextdoor. Uh, just search for community coffee or coffee with council, something like that.
Yeah.
Also, and then, um, or go to the city's website, go to, to city council, the city council page. And at the bottom, there'll be these coffee, a coffee link and you can get the link there.
Yep. Well, we're going to drop it in the comments too on this.
Excellent.
Yep.
All right.
Okay. I know there's something else.
There is.
Yes. It's very important.
It is. It's really important. I, I want to, um, I want to mention, and this is a very serious subject right now. And, you know, people are always asking, how can we get involved? How can we help? And I tell you, probably the, the most important thing that you can do as an individual is think about all the people you know. Your, your family who's not under your, under your roof and even those that are, pay attention to this. We are expecting spikes in depression. We think the depression rates are going to go up tremendously because of the situation and suicide rates, which have already been going up. But this is, they're going to definitely spike during this time. People have lost jobs. We're losing businesses all over the city. We're losing businesses. And, and this is a lot of stress on families. People are cooped up at home. They, they, they can't work. They're not sure what the future is going to be like. They can't pay their bills. They're, you know, people are just under a lot of stress right now. So if you could just take time, call all your family members, call your friends and reach out to your neighbors. And, and, and ask the hard questions. How are you doing? How are you really doing? And, and get them to talk and get them out to exercise. Go for a walk with them. Keep your six-foot distance, you know, wear masks if you want, but get them out to exercise. That's a great way to help with depression. But stay on these people. Don't just call them once. Just, we've got to give them hope. We've got to lift them up and we've got to save some lives here because this is a really difficult time for, for many people. And it's, it's a darkness and depression, something that you can't control it. It just kind of happens. You've got to have somebody help you get out of it. And so this is a, a really important issue, I think. And I appreciate you letting me share that part. Um, totally switching gears though, I didn't really talk about the, the business stuff either. Do you want me to mention that?
Um, yeah, I should have asked that before that because that was like.
A closer.
It was such a good close. I mean, it's so, and it's such an important message. So let me, before we switch gears, like, let me just kind of revisit that real quick because it is critical, you know, I try my best to reach out to people regularly. Um, I do it kind of naturally anyhow, because that's a part of my business, you know, just calling and connecting with the, my database, who some of my database are friends or family members and, and asking how they're doing. But I'll put you on the spot a little bit. Um, I asked, I asked this of somebody the other, something similar the other day. It was more in like a social context, like how to, how to ask on social media, but you know, I know that there are some people that are struggling and my, you know, I feel for them, right? I don't one hundred percent know how to reach out and have those conversations when I know what the answer, like I, to ask how you're doing is stupid because I know how they're doing. It's, it's terrible. So that, that's probably step one. I take my own advice. Maybe don't ask how you're doing if they're, if you know they're not doing, doing well, but I guess, I don't know, Scott, uh, you're a very well-rounded man. You have a lot of, uh, do you have any advice for me there? Like if, if you know struggling, call them.
Now, first of all, I, I'm not a psychologist. I don't play one on TV.
Yeah.
I, but I, a couple of decades ago, I went through a very severe depression myself. It, it was triggered by something from my childhood. It was really weird. Um, and I couldn't control it. And for about a year, I was in a really dark place and including, including being suicidal near the beginning of it. And I don't talk about this publicly. This is the first time that I'm going to say this, this way. But I know what it's like and it was really frustrating for me because I have a strong faith in God. I, I love my family. I've got a huge wonderful family. And I got to where I just didn't care. I, I couldn't help it. I could not control it. And, and it was, um, my wife recognizing it, dragging me into counseling like the next day. And, and probably within just a, a few weeks of counseling, I figured out what it was. And I, I think I'm, I'm bulletproof in that area now. I don't think that kind of a thing could ever possibly trigger me again. But, but the counseling was important in that situation. But I, I recognize the darkness in people and it, you know, and again, I'm not an expert, but for me, don't be afraid to confront somebody and say, hey, you know, if you really think they're in a dark place, you know, and, and you get to the point where you're really worried about it, ask them, you know, are you thinking about hurting yourself or anything? Because you know, you know, you, you can't do that. You've got family, you've got, you know, you can't bail out that way. You've got to hang in there. You've got to get some help. Let me get you connected. Uh, there's suicide hotline numbers. You can get, get them to call and talk. Get them into counseling, get them out, you know, minimally, just get them out walking, get them out talking. Try to find a, a, a bright side to what's going on. I mean, somebody losing their business, feeling like they're losing their investment and how am I gonna, you know, when you get into a dark place, you just keep spiraling down in your thoughts. And we've just got to break that and let people know that it's really important that they, um, excuse me, my dog is irritating me. Hey, this is Ellie.
There we go.
Scratching on me while I'm trying to talk and it's very annoying. Okay. Say hi, everybody. But, you know, don't be afraid to confront them and, and stay on them. Don't let them hang there in the darkness. They, they've just got to have somebody, because they're, especially if they really start, you know, going down a dark tunnel, they need somebody to just keep picking on them and, um, keep at them and, and bring other people in. And again, I'm not a psychiatrist and that may not work for everybody, but I, I think that helped me just to have people be frank and make me talk about it and uh, you know, it was a big deal. And that's, that's a long time ago and I don't think I'll ever be there again now, but, um, you know, I'm just glad somebody recognized that and helped me through it.
Yeah. And in a lot of ways, I mean, Matt, thank you for sharing that. Um, in a lot of ways, I think that's actually better to, to come from you and your story than to maybe come from a psychiatrist, you know, like you felt sometimes, you know, you, you, you were there. You experienced the real, the real thing. So.
And the tough part is when you don't, you, most of us know somebody who's committed suicide and, and, and looking back, we might've seen the signs and there's a lot of guilt in there as well. Um, but a lot of times you don't know. That's why I just, you know, don't be afraid and you can't, you can't make decisions for people. Things are going to happen anyway. And there's times where you don't get a big enough hint to even know what was going on. So, but you know, that's why I just try to reach out and ask, see if there's, see if we can save a few.
Yeah. Cool. Timely and very, very important message. And so speaking of, uh, so I think this is actually a decent segue into this. Um, speaking of businesses, uh, you know, the, the reason that people are starting to feel angst, one of the reasons is, is because their potential, their businesses are in danger. Maybe they weren't set up very sound to begin with, right? There's that element. And then obviously just the natural shutdown of everything has caused people. So what you do in your business, your actual business, when you're not spending, you know, eighteen hours a day serving the community or whatever. But you help people de- design and improve their businesses. That's what you do.
Yes.
I have a question. Uh, so one, I, I'd love, you can, you're, I'd love to hear more about that if you'd like. And then I do have a question about some things that you've seen so far in the community.
Um, don't worry about my business. I, I think you have a link to it. Uh, people can go check it out there and I'm really busy right now anyway, so I don't need to grow up. Well, the downside is this is the perfect time to have my business because I help other businesses and right now they need a lot of help.
Yeah.
You get connected with somebody. If you're struggling in your business, you definitely need a consultant, somebody that's been there before, can help you get through some of this, uh, although in these times, there's not a lot of people that have been there before, but.
Really, really need help. Find someone that can help Scott fulfill these orders and connect the people. And then he might be able to help you with your actual businesses.
I, I can take on a few projects. Um, I just can't do too many. I'm worried about getting too many. Uh, so, so here's some of the challenges that are happening right now. So if you, you own a business that you've been shut down, you're, you know, you may have a restaurant that is a sit-down restaurant. Uh, not, not a to-go type restaurant. Well, you're shut down. The people can't come. You're not allowed to be open. You're not supposed to be open. Um, there's a lot of businesses that are out there that are not considered essential and they have laid off employees and people have lost their jobs. And this is a big, big deal. The, the state and the federal government are, have done a lot of things and SBA loans. You can get some pretty decent loans and, um, SBA is, is, you have to read the details on it, but they, they don't have a whole lot of gotchas if, if you can't pay it back. It's not free money and if you can't pay it back, you, your, your business is over, uh, most likely. But the city tried to jump in and help our small businesses as well. And not a lot of cities are able to do this. And so we've worked really hard and we being the staff, not, not me at all. They've been able to pull together a million dollars that they are going to loan out up to 20,000, 30,000, 20,000 each. And the, all the informations go to the city website homepage.
Yeah, we have a link here too.
It's a 0% interest loan. Uh, we have way too many applications right now than we have money. So, um, they're going to triage it and they're going to go through and, uh, you got to provide financials. And so they're going to have some experts that are going to make a decision whether they think your business will survive if they loan you the money. First, is you're probably not going to survive or it's not worth the risk. And I don't take offense to that, but they just got to put the money as smart as they can. If you've got more employees, that's, that's important because those are other jobs as well. So I'm sure those will get a little higher priority than somebody all by themselves. But, but there's a lot of opportunity out there and, and, um, I think the city ones closed now. I think we just have way too many applications. I don't know if they're still accepting anymore.
Okay.
I'm, I'm actually not sure. I haven't checked that.
Yeah.
I know they got a couple of hundreds. There's quite a few people that applied. But the, if, if you just go out there and look, there's, there's help that they're, you know, this is going to be huge, just a gigantic economic hit to all of us. The big challenge we have right now, the renters, you know, in the housing market, you're protected as far as you can't be evicted during this time. And, you know, that goes through the banks. So the banks are going to back off. You still owe the payments. You just, you know, you can be delayed on them.
Right.
Commercial side, they're not able to pass those laws because there's a lot of legal challenges with anybody saying, you know, you, you don't have to pay your, your lease on your building. Because a lot of times those aren't owned by banks, you know, they're individual owners, investors and, and you're basically going to be hurting other people. So it's, it's a big challenge right now, how you're going to do this. So getting these loans to help pay off your lease, uh, trying to work with your landlords to get them to relax. You know, if they own the building outright, maybe they can relax and, and give you some leeway. Because this is going to just shut down so many businesses. On another side of this, if you're thinking of starting a business or buying a business, this is a great time to do that. You know, what an opportunity. You've got a bunch of downtime right now and, you know, get your business going. There's again, businesses for sale, uh, popping up all over the place right now. And there will be vacancies as well that you could get a new business into. So, um, just a lot of stuff happening. This is going to be just a crazy time for us right now.
Yeah. What, um, so we're, I know you have another appointment coming up. And so we're getting close to the minute, the, that time, you know, where you got to go. But last thing, in regards to business, who are some businesses? So people are having to adapt and change and the way I run my business, although the end result is the same. I'm selling the same product at home or a, or real estate service. I'm having to change the way I do it. But there's some people that have just flat out pivoted into different things. So do you have any cool like success stories or like any businesses that you're particularly proud of right now?
Well, I can, I can name two that I, there's a bunch. In fact, go onto the volunteer, the Roseville Volunteer Force page and scroll down, you'll see, you know, people posting ideas.
Okay.
You know, big spoon yogurts, uh, giving away, donating to a cause, a cause right now. And you're losing, they're losing money in this process, but it's nice for them to just join in and help the community. Couple of neat stories, Randy Peters Catering, uh, they lost, they lost all their catering jobs, all the weddings, all the big events. And they, they had dozens and dozens of events that have been canceled now. And they laid off over 70% of their staff. It was, um, Lisa, I hope you don't mind me saying this, but Lisa was very emotional about that, you know, letting these people go. This was really hard and she was very teary eyed. And it took them a couple of days, but they were able to pivot and they are now selling, um, dinners. And these are gourmet meals are really nice for eight bucks. That's super cheap. That's cheaper than sit-down restaurant. And this is high quality stuff.
Yeah.
And if you buy five of them, they'll do free delivery, which is fantastic too. And, and so we, Karen and I did that. And I mean, they were really good meals and they've got all different kinds of dietary, um, options for you and you can pick and choose. But, and they, they changed their online programs. You can buy them online now and, um, go pick them up or, you know, they'll bring them to you. It's just a, that was a, a cool thing. She couldn't hire back her whole staff, but she was, they got so many orders just because of the way that thing spread on social media. That they had to hire staff back, which was exciting for them.
Yeah.
And exciting for the staff too.
Yeah.
Another story that I think was pretty cool was Garden of Eaton. And I, I think Ash and Heather have like 35 employees. And, and they pay them pretty well. It's not just minimum wage jobs actually pay them pretty well to start with. And they, they told the employees that they're going to try to keep them all on. And so they made a deal with them. And so what they're doing is they don't have enough business. They're doing to-go orders right now and, and they're delivering and things. But in the, and Ash is one of the people that brought over three cases of toilet paper. That kind of got my mess started in my office, so it's his fault. And that's because I had to distribute them back out again. But, um, one of the things they're doing to keep their staff busy, because they don't have enough orders, is they're making a hundred meals a day. I'm not sure if it's every day. I think it, it could be every day, but they're just to do something. So they make a hundred meals and they go give them to like hospitals. And I know they're talking to, uh, the Roseville Police and Fire, so they can maybe just bring meals over to the first responders. And so they're, they're looking for those opportunities where they can just go out and give these meals away. And again, he's losing money at it, but he's trying to keep his staff employed because a lot of these are college students and, um, you know, people that need the job. And so I, I'm impressed with that. I, I'm just, I think that's a neat statement. And they're in a lucky position because restaurants, you're running, I ran a restaurant for 12 years. You're running on such thin margins. I know when we went through the, the recession, my restaurant probably should have closed, but we, um, kept putting money into it to get us through it. And then we ended up coming back out of it on the other end. But in this kind of a thing where you're almost dead in the water, I mean, that's fantastic for an owner to be able to keep the jobs for the employees. So I would just encourage people, go look up your favorite restaurant. Maybe don't make your own meal tonight, order out if you can afford it. Uh, another quick message I think is really important. If you cannot pay your utility bills, uh, call your utility company. If you're in Roseville, they'll work with you. You're still going to have to pay it, but they won't give you the fees and stuff, but you got to talk to them. Don't just not pay it. Or pay, pay what you can, because we need those revenues to run it. So please don't just not pay. We're worried about that too. Same with property tax. The county said if you cannot pay your property tax or you can't pay all of it, call them. They can work out a, a payment plan or something with you. Don't just not pay it. So, you know, the, the community, the, the governments are trying to help as best they can, just, uh, be proactive on it. Try not to stress. We're all in it together. This is a big deal for everybody.
Yeah. Well, that's it. Yeah, that's a good, good tip. I think the key word is, is call and don't just not pay it. Because there's forgiveness and there's programs available, but not more just blatant, uh, you know, default, right?
What's important too, if you can pay, please do pay because the taxes off your property tax, um, we need them. That's what funds our police and fire and, and other services that we're desperately trying to keep going. Um, and your utilities, we only, like Roseville only charges what it costs to run the utility. And if you're not paying your bill, you know, we're, we're borrowing out of our reserves to run these utilities. We've got to get the, you know, the, the funding for it because, um, you know, that's what funds our utilities. So just pay if you can, please, or pay what you can. And if you can't, call somebody and talk about it.
And if you haven't, you should have paid your property tax already anyhow, because it's late on the 10th. That doesn't mean it's due on April 10. Scott, you've stayed with us for an hour. I think we, you know, it's tough to hold a crowd, but you, you held my attention for an entire hour. And I know we still have some viewers on there. So thank you so much, everybody that, that watched. This is the time, thank you, Scott, for spending an hour with us and, and sharing your story, sharing all that, that's available for people to serve in the community. And also the super timely, very, very important advice on mental health and supporting the people that we care about right now.
Yeah, no problem, man. Thank you for having me on. It's nice to talk to everybody.
Yeah, of course. All right. We'll drop all the links below, um, so that you can connect with Scott some more.